That's to do the same.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good morning to you, Chair. Permanent Witnesses. My name is Gift Kakoma. I'm Council Secretary. Chair with.
Good morning, Honorable Members and Permanent Witnesses. My name is Simon Nyarinda, Director of Shango Town Council.
Good morning, Chair and Permanent Witnesses with Honorable Members. My name is Jongo Abishai Milao, Director Finance, Shango Town Council.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Agoma Namoya, Shango Town Council, Permanent Officer.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Honorable Members of Parliament. My name is Mununga Shamba and Maintain Auditor for Shango Town Council.
Thank you. Permanent Witnesses, starting from Aji's office.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning to yourself, Honorable Chair. Good morning, Honorable Members of Parliament. Shango Town Council, you're welcome to your committee. Fellow Permanent Witnesses, good morning. I am Patrick Mwanamunue Kiwipe, Assistant Director, Office of the Auditor General, Mungu. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair.
Morning.
Good morning, Honorable Members of Parliament. Good morning, Shango Town Council. Good morning, my fellow Permanent Witnesses. My name is Patrick Acheche from Mungu Audit Office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. My name is Simon Munyama, Office of the Auditor General, under the Planning and Research Department.
Good morning. I am Lovinda Siniani from the Planning and Research Department in the Office of the Auditor General. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. My name is. Director, Minister of Finance.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Members of the Committee. Good morning, Shango. My name is Achua Edes, Assistant Director, Local Authorities Department, Minister of Finance, Division. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good morning to you today and the Honorable Members of your committee. Shango Town Council, you're welcome to your session. I'm Kazinga Kennedy, Permanent Witness from the Ministry of Local Government and Road Development. Thank you.
The Chairperson, Members of the Committee, good morning. Shango Town Council, good morning. Sombu Matende is my name from Local Government Service Commission.
Thank you. We can have the Clerk's office.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. My name is Rachel Chileshe from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm Tokile Ponda from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, Members of the Committee and our Permanent Witnesses. Good morning, CS and your team, and you're welcome. Emmanuel Walia from the Office of the Clerk.
Honorable Member for Wusakiri.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning to you. Morning, Honorable Members. Was seated physically and those logged online. Our Permanent Witnesses, Secretariat Witness, good morning. Kalobo Pavuma is my name. I represent the people of Sakiri Constituents.
Honorable Member for Dundumwezi. Much and good morning to you. Good morning, my colleagues. Good morning, our Permanent Witnesses. Shango, good morning, and you're welcome. I'm Singo Edgar, representing the people of Dundumwezi in Kalomo, Southern Province. Thank you.
You forgot to give your title. Are you not doctor? Okay, thank you. We have also other members who are joining us virtually. We have Honorable Kamondo. Honorable Kamondo.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Honorable. You can go ahead and.
Kamondo, Member of Parliament from Fumwe.
Thank you very much, Honorable Kamondo. Honorable Member for Mitete, are you there?
Chair, direct full on to you. Misheki, Mbotela is my name. MP for Mitete, Shango. You're welcome.
I like the Misheki. We've also been joined by Honorable Member for Kaumbwe. Honorable Member for Kaumbwe, you can introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Doctor Aaron Muazha, Member of Parliament for Kaumbwe, constituency in Petalka District of the Eastern Province. Thank you.
Thank you very much, CS and team. My name is Mishik. You heard the other Mishik, I'm also Misheki. Mteetwa Nyambose, representing the land of people of Chasefu constituency in Eastern Province, and the privilege to chair your committee. Once again, you're welcome. You can quickly take us through your memorandum.
We are here, Chair, as the Shango Town Council to present a memorandum submission to your committee for the audit of our council, which is Shango, cited in the Auditor General's report for the financial years. Year ended 31st December 2023. And this chair has to do with paragraph 126 and appendices 1, 2, 6, 7, 12, 14, 16, 27, 28, 31, 32, and 33. Chair, I believe. And that practice where I just have to go back to the query.
Yes, you just read the query.
Yes.
What the query is, then you go to management's response or cause of the query. Then you go to the action taken or remedial measures, then just like that.
Thank you so much, Chair, for your guidance. So I'm on the first page, Chair.
The query is budget income and expenditure, the performance of the budget. Now you can go to the management response.
Thank you so much, Chair. Our response, Chair, as management, is that we acknowledge the auditor's findings and wish to state that the cause of the query and action taken are in the table below. Chair, the first one is to do with local taxes. So the cause of the query, this was due to the formation of a revenue task force mandated to improve revenue collection, the deployment of civil servants under education, and the health has also improved, the personal levy receipt from payments. Chair, action taken. We, management has since updated our revenue, the revenue database to incorporate the new businesses added to the district. The second one, Chair, has to do with fees and charges. The cause, Chair, is the overperformance was due to receipt of abroad to ZESCO and means of transport logistics. Action taken, Chair, council has since updated the database. Every opportunity. Direct every revenue to assist in delivering municipal services to the people of Shango. I move to the third one, Chair, and this has to do with licenses. The cause, Chair, is the underperformance was due to non-licit of inspected petroleum licenses that for due in the year 2023 from ZESCO limited. Action taken, Chair. The council is in receipt of petroleum license from limited for the year 2023, which was not realized in the period under review. Fourth one, Chair, this has to do with levies. The cause is the overperformance was due to the realized high movement of timber from our district, Shango. Action, Chair, is the council has since updated the timber. New concessions. The fifth one, Chair. This has to do with permits. The cause, the performance was due to non-expected extension of business hours in the year. Taken, Chair, the council has since sensitized the community on compliance during the budgetary consultative meeting for the year 2024 and 2025 budgets respectively, to ensure the community comply with the existing regulations on management of liquor stores. I move to item number six, Chair. Look, this has to do with Local Government Equalization Fund. Cause, Chair, the under collection was due to funds withheld by Zulau and Lassif contributions at source. Action taken, the council has received correspondences source for Zulau and Lassif since been receiving receipts from the two beneficiaries respectively. Other grants. Cause, Chair, the favorable performance was due to the request made for funding to reduce outstanding terminal benefits from the ministry. Action, the council has continued to request for financial assistance from the Ministry of Local Government and Housing to meet its obligation. I move to the last one, Chair, and this has to do with other receipts. So the cause. See now that seat allows from receipt of community boho contributions, Lulo Water Funds, loan recoveries from CDF and fund. Action taken, Chair, the council has continued to recover loans from CDF beneficiaries and receipts, Lulo Water Funds from Yonsef. Chair, that is all under that query. With your permission, Chair.
Can proceed.
Number two, Chair, is failure to spend. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wish to state that 980 was as a result of balances on salaries, capital, and operations funds. Action taken. Management wishes to state that the aforementioned amount was spent in 2024 as presented in the table below. Meddled measure, Chair. We have the reference, Chair, to appendix two, which will provide, which will help us in terms of providing proof of payment. Meddled measure, Chair, management will endeavor to collect the budgeted revenue and spend the funds within the financial. I move to the next one, and this has to do with the audit of annual performance, favorable performance.
Oh. That one, we ask you to skip it.
Thank you so much, Chair. I move to item C, which is deliverable targets and outputs not achieved. Management response. Chair, differences to Table Three, and this headed targeted outputs not achieved. We are, we have the information as presented, Chair. The first one, number special standing committee held. The second one, which is a B, plan, and we have that information. We have C, economic and business development, a number of commercial buildings constructed. D, public health and environmental protection, tonnage of waste collected and disposed. Thank you so much, Chair, for that guidance. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wish to state that the cause of query and action taken as presented in the table below. The first one, Chair, number of special standing committee held. Cause of query, the council did not have any incidence of any matter to warrant convening a special council meeting as all the matters for the period under review were tabled and deliberated during ordinary council meetings held as per civic calendar. Action taken. The council has and will still make provisions for the special ordinary council meeting to take into consideration for any would be special items, Chair. Item number two in the table, or rather B, and this has to do with integrated development plan. Cause, Chair, the means guided through secular number MLG/52/12/4, advising that no local authority should go ahead to prepare strategic plans by await the implementation of a program by Management Development Division and the Ministry of Local Government for guidance. Action taken, Chair, the integrated development plan has been prepared and approved. Further, Chair, the strategic plan is actually enshrined in the integrated development plan. I move to the second, second one, number of area, number of local area plans prepared. This was, because of the query, Chair, this was due to inadequate financial support to sponsor the formulation of the policy document. However, Chair. It should be noted that the details of the policy document are enshrined in the integrated development plan, which is, which is also called as special development framework. Action taken, Chair, the integrated development plan has been prepared and approved. Further, Chair, the local area plan is enshrined in this important document called integrated development plan. I move to the next item, Chair, number of properties recommended to lands for offer. This is to do with plots. Cause, Chair, recommendation letters are generated and forwarded to the Commission of Lands once the applicants have met all the requirements. No wonder only a few were recommended after meeting the requirements. Action taken, Chair, the council has continued to engage property owners to have their requisite documents to qualify for recommendations to Ministry of Lands. I move to the next one, Chair. This has to do with economic and business development. Under this, Chair, the first one is number of commercial buildings constructed. Cause, Chair, the council planned to construct a commercial building in the year under review, however, it had not been completed at the time of audit. Action taken, Chair, the contractor has since completed the construction of the council lodge. I move to the next one, which is D, and this has to do with public health and environmental protection. Under this, Chair, the first one is a tonnage of waste collected and disposed. Cause of the query, the council in the year 2023 has had some routine maintenance of the tractor due to some experienced breakdown for about two weeks, and this affected achieving the planned output. Action taken, Chair, the tractor is now up and running, and sometimes resort to use the TIPATRAC in cases where the tractor has a breakdown. So under D, Chair, I go to the next one, which is proportion of food premises inspected. Cause of the query, Chair, at the time of audit, the report for inspection of food premises was not availed for verification. Action taken, the council has had three task force operations where most of the food premises were inspected and expired products confiscated. I move to the next one, Chair, a number of water samples tested. Cause of the query, at the time of audit, the report for tested water samples was not availed for verification. Action taken, Chair. The total of 13 water samples were tested using the council portable laboratory, which included routine inspection at three water points within township area as well as 10 new bohs that were due during the period under review. I move to the fourth one, Chair. A number of public spaces disinfected. Cause, Chair, the council did not embark on this activity because the idea behind was disinfection for COVID-19. Action taken, the activity has been budgeted for under healthy a devolved ministry on malaria prevention. I go to the next one, proportion of proportion of dogs digested. Cause, Chair, the council did not embark on this activity in the year 2023. However, management only managed to procure dog tags. Action taken, the council has agreed to work within to work with hand in hand with veterinary, the same period they will be doing vaccinations. I move to the next one, Chair, number of public premises inspected. Cause, at the time of audit, the report for inspection of the public premises was not availed for verification. Action taken, the council has had three task force operations where most of the public premises were inspected. Item number seven, under this, a number of water points and bohs repaired. Cause, at the time of audit, the report for water points and bohs repaired was not availed for verification. Action taken. The works were procured in lots together with other districts by the ministry. The deputation of the seven bohs was successfully done together with repair of 12 bohs, unlike the targeted eight, bringing the total of boh repaired during the period under review to 49. I go to the next item, number of dewashay meeting held. A cause. Truly, as of 31st December 2023, a total of three dewashay meetings had been held with a variance of one. However, Chair, the fourth dewashay meeting had to be held in first week of January 2024 to allow exhaustive reporting by stakeholders to the meeting. Action taken. The fourth dewashay meeting was held in first week of January 2024 to allow exhaustive reporting by stakeholders to the meeting. I go to the next subheading, Chair, which is public order and safety. So the first item under this is number of words sensitized on fire services and regulations. Cause of query, the council had planned to undertake to undertake and achieve the above outputs in anticipation that the Local Government Service Commission would deploy firefighters as per guidance during budget period. Action taken. The council still awaits the deployment of the firefighters in the district. Further, Chair, the council has continued to send staff returns to the Local Government Service Commission. I go to the next item, which is number of certificates issued. Cause of query, the council had planned to undertake and achieve the above outputs in anticipation that the Local Government Service Commission would deploy firefighters as per guidance during the budget, the budgeting period. Action taken, Chair, the council still awaits the deployment of the firefighter in the district. Further, Chair, the council has continued to send staff returns to the Local Government Service Commission. I go to the next one, which is proportion of fire incidences responded to. Cause of query, the council had planned to undertake and achieve the above outputs in anticipation that the Local Government Service Commission would deploy firefighters as per guidance. Action taken, the council still awaits the deployment of firefighters in the district. Further, Chair, the council has continued to send staff returns to the Local Government Service Commission. Item number four, number of building buildings, building inspections conducted. Cause of query, the council had planned to undertake and achieve the above output in anticipation that the Local Government would deploy firefighters, just as presented in the in the, in that, in the item under, under three. And action that, that management has taken, Chair, the council is still still awaits the deployment of firefighters in the district. Further, Chair, the council has continued to send staff returns to the Local Government Service Commission. I move to item F. Management and Support Services. The first one, Chair, is percentage of internal audit queries answered. Cause of query, the council had planned to produce four quarterly internal audit reports. However, Chair, in the year under review, management only managed to to manage to, to, to conduct these audits in three quarters. The last quarter audit was done in the first quarter. The last quarter audit was done in the first quarter of twenty twenty four. Action taken, the last quarter audit was done in the first quarter of the year of the following year of twenty twenty four to represent twenty five percent. I move to subway ding G. And this reads resource mobilization and management. Under this chair, uh, the first one is number of revenue collection task force enforcement conducted. Cause of query, the council planned to conduct four task force operations, which were to be done a quarterly. However, chair, uh, management only managed to conduct in quarter one, three and four. Management couldn't conduct for the second quarter due to the delayed planning which spilled over to third quarter. Action taken chair, uh, the council has continued to undertake the combined task force to ensure compliance in the district. Uh, management has since saw the task force activities for in the year twenty twenty four. Uh, the major measure chair, uh, the council will always ensure to implement the planned activities. With your permission chair, I move to item number D. And this has to do with compliance with legislation and regulations. So under this, we have the first one, procurement of goods and services expenditure and leading to and delivered the stores items. Under management response, cause of query, uh, management chair acknowledges the auditor's observations. However, uh, this, this vehicle, these vehicle components supplied were fitted to the vehicle whilst at the garage. And at the time of audit, the store's documents had not been attached to the payments as they were misused. Action taken chair, the council has since secured the delivered the store's documents and the vehicle is operational. Uh, chair, references to appendix four. Uh, the major measures, the council will ensure all documents are attached to respective documents on time to avoid such occurrences. I move to the next one chair, management of local government equalization fund, twenty percent for capital projects. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings. However, chair, the council had budgeted for only four projects as per table. Uh, action taken, during the course of the year twenty twenty three chair, they could have made a budget variation of the aforementioned projects. The council implemented those projects and completed them in the year twenty twenty four and are now under defect rapid period. Chair, uh, have provided the evidence uh with, uh, on indifference uh or another appendix five. The major measures chair, the council will ensure all approved projects are completed within the financial year. I go to the next one chair, completion of existing structure challenge at the council. Uh, management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the findings by the auditor. At the time of audit, power connection had already been paid for just awaiting the actual connection, which was, which also delayed. A further chair, the frames for aluminium windows uh needed some adjustment in terms of the size, hence the contractor had taken them for adjustment. Action taken chair, the power has since been connected to the lodge and the contractor has fixed the aluminium windows. A chair have provided pictorial evidence and apart from that, this chair uh, we are also referring to appendix six. The major measures, the council will ensure all approved projects are completed within the financial year. I move to the next one chair, which is cross cutting issues. Uh, under one audit opinion, the management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wish to mention that a Shangombo Town Council financial statements were prepared in accordance with the accounting principles and standards in line with the IPSA's cash basis. Action taken chair, management has continued to adhere to guiding principles and standards in preparation of financial statements. Uh, the major measures, uh, management will continue to abide by the guiding principles and standards in preparation for financial statements. I move here to the next one, which is appendix two. And this has to do with budget, funding and expenditure. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wish to state that nine hundred and eighty eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen quater and spent was as a result of balances of salaries, capital and operational funds. Action taken chair, management wishes to state that the aforementioned amount was spent in twenty twenty four as presented in the table below. As well as the, as well as uh appendix seven. Uh, the major measures chair, management will endeavor to spend the funds within the financial year. I move to appendix six and supported payments. Uh, management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings. A chair, at the time of audit, the supporting documents were uh filed in a separate box file in the office of the store's officer. Action taken chair, the goods received not good issue not and the receipts have since been attached to the payment voucher. A reference chair is to appendix eight. The major measures, uh, management will ensure all supporting documents are availed on time to avoid such queries. Chair, I move to appendix seven, missing payment vouchers. It were two hundred and eighty six thousand three hundred and fifty eight. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings on missing payment vouchers and regrets uh not having filed the identified payment vouchers. However, chair, they said payment vouchers were misfiled after undergoing our routine quarterly internal audits. Action taken chair, management wishes to mention that they said missing payment vouchers were traced and available for verification. A reference chair is to appendix nine. The major measures, management will ensure payment vouchers are I move to the next one, which is appendix twelve and accounted for few well. Uh, management response, uh, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings on an accounted for few hours. However, chair, disposal documents are normally filed in separate box files, which at the time of audit, the documents were not presented due to the store's officer who had gone on an urgent leave. Action taken chair, uh, management has since attached the disposal documents. Difference chair is to appendix ten. The major measures, uh, management will ensure all payments have adequate disposal documents. I move to and accounted for stores. Response, management acknowledges the auditor's findings on an accounted for stores. However, chair, disposal documents are normally filed in separate box files, uh, which at the time of audit, the documents were not presented due to the store's officer the absence who had gone on an urgent leave. Further chair, the other items were brought for use when the lodge the other items were brought for use when the lodge um come operational and at the time of audit, they were still in stores. Action taken chair, management has since attached the disposal documents. And on the other hand, the items for the council lodge under capital account are being issued as the furnishing of the rooms is underway. A chair, we've uh, uh, provided the evidence under appendix eleven. The major measures, management will ensure all documents, all payments have adequate disposal documents. I move to the next one chair, appendix sixteen, failure to fill vacant positions. Management response, cause of query, the cause of this query was as a result of positions not filled at the time of audit due to the following. The first one chair, employees transferred out to other councils and not replaced. Second one, newly introduced positions on the establishment and not filled by the local government service commission uh despite the council having requested for the new staff. Action taken chair, the council made recommendations to the local government service commission requesting for new staff to fill the vacant positions. Staff returns highlighting the vacant positions sent to the government service commission uh quarterly for action. Several follow ups through visitations, email and direct calls on the com- recommendations submitted to the government to ensure field. However, chair, after series of follow ups to the local government's commission, some key positions in question have since been filled up and that the employees have reported for work. For instance, chair, uh, the council has received the social the programmer, system manager, civil engineer, engineer, publications officer, senior legal officer of uh, the major measures, the council will ensure that all the positions under its mandate in terms of employment are filled. On the other hand, chair, the council work hand in hand with the local government service commission to ensure that uh vacant positions are filled as soon as they for vacant to avoid having similar future. I move chair to appendix twenty seven, and this has to do with failure to install and maintain street rights. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the find auditor. However, chair, during the period under review, the council had not budgeted for the installation of street lights in the district. Action taken, the council using the lodge sector grant has engaged contractors to install the street lights in the district uh in the CBD and as well as Natu Koma subcenter. The contractors chair have mobilized on site and works are ongoing. Uh, find attached the contracts to the project, chair, difference uh to appendix. The major measure, the council will always prioritize service provision to the community. I move to the next one, which is appendix twenty eight, chair, failure to settle statutory and other obligations. Management response, cause of acknowledges the findings on the settlement of during the period in much resources to meet all statutory obligations and municipal services to the district. Action taken, manages the auditor's findings. However, the council has made significant payments towards clearing NAP, NAPSa, Madsen Insurance and Nima. A further chair, the council has continued to pay the principal due on a monthly basis to Z L A and is committed to clearing the outstanding areas as funds are available. Uh, below is the table with the status and also reference to appendix fourteen. The major measures, management will ensure monthly dues are cleared on monthly basis and sec- and, and securing resources to clear outstanding areas. Uh, further chair, management will engage the Zambia Revenue Authority on the payment plan towards areas. I move to the next one, which is appendix twenty nine, failure to settle staff obligations. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the findings on settlement of staff obligations. However, the areas were accumulated during the period when the position was poor, such that the council could terms of terminal benefits and other stuff. Action taken, the council has made significant uh, management has government and rural development seeking assistance. A bureau chair is the table showing the status. And also reference to appendix fifteen. The major measure council will ensure, will ensure clearing the outstanding staff obligation each time uh the collection is enough. I move to the next one, which is appendix thirty one, management of local government equalization fund. Uh, management response, management acknowledges the auditor's findings on the utilization of local government equalization fund. A chair, the council managed one million one hundred and eighty nine, three hundred and eighty five quater against the twenty percent capital component. Uh, this is due to the projects that were awarded in the last quarter of the year twenty twenty three that made the funds not to be fully utilized. Action taken chair, the local authority has since made significant, significant payments towards the twenty twenty three approved projects as per table below. Chair, difference also to appendix sixteen. The major measures, the council will ensure projects planned for are implemented within the same financial year. I move to the next one, which is appendix thirty two, a failure to transfer funds to capital grant. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings. However, chair, uh, management usually receive local government equalization funding in the district fund account. They have to transfer the funds to capital account for project implementation. Further, the management normally sent in the first week of the following month, which usually the twenty percent for December flips over to January of the following year. Action taken, uh, management has since transferred the December twenty twenty three, twenty percent in the month of January twenty twenty four. Below chair is the schedule of transfers, also reference to appendix seventeen. The major measures, the council will ensure ministerial guidelines. To the next one, which is appendix thirty three, failure to establish firefighting services. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the findings by od- by audit agenda. Uh, the council had made a budget provision of six firefight, firefighter officer A further chair, funds are being sourced to establish firefighting facilities and equipment, though at the time of audit, the fire extinguishers were already placed in strategic places within the premises of the council. Action taken, the deployment of these officers is done by the local government service commission. Henceforth, chair, staff returns are always submitted on quarterly basis to the local government service commission, a difference chair to appendix eighteen. The major measures, so will always be in the local commission. Chair, that was my last submission and with your permission, I wish to submit our report as presented. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much, Shango Bo Town Council. At this juncture now, I'll ask members of parliament to seek points of clarification. Dr. Honorable Moanza.
Thank you, chair. We go to page twenty.
Page twenty.
Actually, yes, it starts from page nineteen, actually. Undelivered items. February and May twenty twenty-three, the council engaged two suppliers to supply the spare parts for Nissan Patrol. Nissan Patrol number plate is B A D ninety-five twenty twenty-five at a total cost of seventy-nine thousand seven two hundred and seventeen and the suppliers were paid the whole amount on twenty-second February and May ten. However, at the time of audit, the spare parts costing seventy-nine thousand two hundred and seventeen had not been delivered, seventeen months after payment. The management response is that at the time of audit, the store's documents had not attached to the payment as they were misfiled. So, management confirms that the spare parts were delivered and they were fitted to the vehicle, wallowed at the garage. And currently, the vehicle is a runner and the council has since secured the delivery stores. They have referred as to appendix four. The documents are now found. So we go to appendix four, there's a picture of Nissan Patrol and this payment voucher is, the payer is Drex Auto Parts, appendix four, yes. The payment voucher shows that Drex was paid one hundred and five thousand nine hundred. This voucher is not acquitted. It does not indicate whether Drex Auto Parts received the funds or not. Now, we go to the local purchase order, which is the next page. The local purchase order is accounting for the payment that was made at one zero five nine hundred. That's a local purchase order. And what council received, the good is, is the third page. So the spare parts are listed as delivered and received. It goes to the second page. So my points of clarification that I want to seek is, what was the value of the local purchase order for these spare parts? Because the auditor picked seventy-nine thousand, what we see in the evidence, the local purchase order is one hundred and five thousand quater. The second question is, the payment that was received, Drex Auto, zero five, consistent with the local purchase order, but the goods received by the council, the value of the goods received by the council is ninety-two thousand eight hundred. As against his paid purchase order of one zero five, representing an overpayment of thirteen thousand one hundred quater. How do you explain this overpayment?
Thank you so much, chair. With your permission, chair, I wish to call upon the responses to. Thank you.
Five, which is one hundred and five thousand nine hundred, then, and this is what actually was paid to the supplier. And. This one that was not attached was still attached to the documents with, in the stores was. When, if I did not come to the stores officer and I sought is able to issue. So now at the time of audit, the second one, we remove the thirty-three thousand, we remain with about seventy-something thousand. Then there are two payments that are adding up to seventy-nine as queried. The other one was for Tata, which we have also provided on the same appendix.
The Tata, this particular order was for the Nissan, B A D, yes, B A D. And then, the list of spares that are in the order, therefore, the truck, the. And this explanation that I understand the explanation that the seventy-nine that was queried was. Still, with this, the goods received not, the amounts that were paid to the suppliers are above the. Respond with the price of the goods received not, your price, the goods received not has prices. The second one is thirty-three thousand and fifty quater. The first one is. This check where the overpayment of thirteen thousand one hundred from. Also, the processes, the processes for this order, there's no evidence of. There is no evidence of stores requesting, stores requisition to request for this particular. Unless, unless it's. No issue not. How do, where are those documents?
Honorable Kalobo has an additional question on the same.
Thank you. I'm choosing here, chair. It says, council engaged the two suppliers to supply spare parts for the Nissan. And when you check the payment, the payment voucher, they've only made the payments to one supplier. So what I expected me to see is that the total value that is in question. So maybe the witness, can the witness maybe clarify on this particular matter because we're only talking about the Nissan, not the tractor. We've seen other payments for, for the tractor. But here, it's only the Nissan. It is indicated that these spares you paid the one on the second February, the other one you paid the money, ten to match. So can we see those statements? Also, let them exhibit the bank transfer, because I can't see any bank transfer document on their exhibit. Thank you very much, chair.
CS, those questions are very clear. The concerns raised by the honorable members of the committee.
Thank you so much, chair. With your indulgence, chair, we'll call upon the director finance again to provide the responses. Thank you.
DF.
Thank you, chair. On, on the query, it's indicating two payment vouchers, which the first one is, was paid on the twenty-second of February, which is talking on, the payment that was paid on twenty-second February is the one that has an amount of one zero five. Then the one that was paid on the tenth of May, it is the one that has a six thousand for Tata. So now the, the query in question for one zero five, we, the order was one zero five, one hundred and five thousand. Then at the time of audit, the GRN they found was a amount, had a total of thirty-three Then they checked for the other one, which was not provided at that, at that particular time. But we are here to mention that the, the GRN that corresponds to that amount, that will amount to one zero five, when you add thirty-three plus that amount, it gives us one zero five, has been attached and.
Source, thirty-three thousand quater plus forty, plus fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty comes to ninety-two thousand eight hundred. My question is, the, the local purchase order value, it is well, which is well presented, is one zero five eight hundred. Then the GRN, we forget about those other procedures because we're also looking for delivery note, requisition from the stores and so on. So when you compare, when you compare these two, the GRN value and the, the payment voucher, it does not come to one zero five. It is ninety-two thousand six hundred, which is an overpayment of thirteen thousand one hundred. Even just at a glance, check the entries, the entries on the local purchase order, they do not match the entries on the, on the goods received. Even the picture that you have supplied us with, how can we tell this is a B A D ninety-five twenty, twenty-seven, ninety, what? B A D ninety-five, ninety-five twenty-five, the number plate, we are referring to the right vehicle or not? So explain on the discrepancy, the overpayment more especially, we are on that.
Additional question, Honorable Pavuma?
Yes, chair. The response given, the chair, is the DF has not addressed my question. Here what is stated is that the same Nissan spare parts, you engaged the two suppliers. And for both suppliers, their delivery is what is in question. Now, on your payment, you are only showing payments to one supplier. So my, my expectation going by this statement was that I was supposed to see two payment vouchers to two different suppliers as indicated here. So can you clarify? Two suppliers with Nissan spare parts. Page twenty, the top part of page twenty. In February twenty twenty-three, the suppliers for the supply of spare parts for Nissan Patrol at the total cost of seventy-nine. And the suppliers were paid the whole amount on the second February and tenth of May twenty twenty-three. However, as at thirty September twenty twenty-four, the spare parts costing seventy-nine thousand had not been delivered, seventeen months. So this two suppliers, this is referred to the spare parts for one vehicle. We are only seeing payments, payment voucher. This second supplier, there is not a payment voucher for Tata, but we are not questioning spare parts for that, for the Tata. We are questioning spare parts.
Okay.
Your mic, Honorable Kal. Just a follow-up or an addition to what my colleague asked. He said seventeen, with seventy-nine thousand two one seven, seventeen months. And from your responses, manager, you alluded to the fact that the players were delivered, they actually at the garage. Would you be kind enough to give us the job cut so that we know on the vehicle? Thank you, chair.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, Chair. To the question by the Honorable for Sakile, I'd like to call upon the Procurement Officer to give clarification in terms of the number engaged at that time. And also, the other question by the Honorable, that I will call upon the Director of Finance.
Procurement Officer, your response.
All right. Very much, Chair, for that particular... So what happened on this particular transaction is that Shangombo Town Council engaged Drake's Auto spares to supply, fit and also deliver this particular Nissan. So on this particular transaction, what happened is the 105 was a single transaction, one particular supplier. So in this 105, this included supply of spares, fitting, labor and also delivery of the vehicle to Shangombo. The reason why we suggested that, because the garage, the vehicle was being worked on here in Usaka. The reason why we suggested that this vehicle be delivered by the mechanics or whether the suppliers in Shangombo was also part of testing whether the Nissan, whether what was worked on was in conformity with what was requested for. So this particular vehicle was delivered by the mechanics in Shangombo, supplied the parts and also worked on the vehicle. So it was a single transaction. We paid one supplier to supply it also. It's a single transaction.
Honorable Pavhuma?
The question is the two suppliers indicated here.
Just a minute, you should switch off your mic after...
I want you to address the question of two suppliers indicated. You engaged the two suppliers. This is what I want you to clarify, but you have only, there's only voucher for one supplier. You made the payments in 2nd February, 10th May to two suppliers. This is the question. We are only seeing one supplier here. Where is the other supplier? And DF, as you come, the bank transfer statements.
Procurement, just okay addition before you respond.
Yeah, addition, Chair. When you look at, my colleague did ask about why they decided to, not to show us the number plate? Because when you look at this vehicle, Chair, you cannot ascertain whether it is the same vehicle that has been referred to. Because they, they've brought a picture on the side. Yes, we appreciate, but I think we would have appreciated more if the front or the back of the vehicle was also indicated, so we could relate the number plate to the vehicle.
Before CS comes, we want Procurement to respond to what Honorable Pavhuma has indicated.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So what happened, I think it's the way the auditor picked it, I remember now, I recall. There were two payments, yes, for sure, because the other payment that was made was for Imperial Motors Limited. Because what happened, actually, the idea was to take this vehicle to Imperial Motors. But then when we requested for an inquiry, Imperial Motors indicated that they didn't have three quarters of the items in stock. So they only supplied, I think, items to do with the four-wheel drive of the Nissan. At that particular time, those are the only parts that they had in, in stock. So the other payment, I think the second payment that is being referred to...
You think...
No, no, I recall now.
You see, we deal with evidence here. We not hope this committee, as you can get from the honorable members. The vehicle, you have just captured the side part, we can't ascertain whether this is the vehicle in question. Again, you are telling us that I think there was another transaction on Imperial Motors. You think, you didn't realize, these are council transactions, council business transactions. And you are the Procurement Officer. You need to satisfy this committee. Because you can, this, we, on this transaction, a lot of suspicion. If you look at this transaction, I had time to go through it even personally, so I am aware why the honorable members are seeing what I saw also. So can you tell this committee, why have one payment, then you are saying there are
Thank you, Chair. I think I was referring to the question that the Honorable raised, saying there were two particular payments that were made. I recall very well, the other payment, as I indicated, was for Drake's Auto spares.
Procurement, that cannot be admitted. Can you show us what you are talking about? If we were to go the route you are telling us, yes, you are the one who is able to reflect on the same. Can you show us the evidence before you make that submission, so that we are able to follow you? Is it on Appendix 1 on Drake's? Again, you have changed to, from Imperial to Drake's. So can you show us the, the evidence? Here, we have the document from you. If you have any additional information, we shall submit, we shall admit, give us. DF, can you help us?
Thank you, Chair. Referring to the same query that has 79,000.
Yes.
I just want to enlighten what is making up the 79,000. Because these are the two payments that are in question here. Okay. We are looking at the 105, the one that we have attached here. That is the first payment. Now, on the, this same 105, the auditors came, going through the payment voucher, they discovered the, the GRN that was attached was amounting to 33,650. So now if you subtract it from 105, it gives us 72,000. Then now, the other one, the balance, because we are looking at 79, the balance is 6,966.
That GRN was for what?
For the same spare parts.
So...
The Drake's.
So why was the GRN 72 instead of 79?
Okay. As you can check, I think, what, what was attached here? GRN number 1645 is the, was the last one.
Appendix 9?
Appendix, uh... So the first face of the GRN was, was not there on the payment voucher. So the last face, which was even closed, and the total amount on the last face is 33,650.
Yes, Honorable?
Chair, this particular issue is very serious. I'm assuming it right here. This is 100% cooked evidence. Maybe before we proceed with them, a simple question. On the Nissan's spare parts, how many orders did you generate? At the initial stage, how many orders for the same Nissan? That question led we go.
Thank you, Chair. There is one local purchase order. For this in question. Or even those that are not available?
No, no.
Because we might be asked to...
When you planned to buy, to procure spare parts for the Nissan, at the initial stage, how many orders did you generate? Is a simple question. At the initial stage.
Procurement.
Thank you, Chair. The copy of the purchase order is attached.
You are not responding to the question.
It's one particular order.
The question is very straightforward. At the initiation of this issue of repairing a vehicle, how many orders did you generate or were they canceled? How many orders for this? Before you come to the GRN, when you started this, that we want to repair this motor vehicle, how many have been canceled? How many were generated?
Thank you, Chair. So on this particular transaction, when we're repairing the Nissan, we raised the two purchase orders. The first order was under Drake's Auto spares, which is 105,900. Then the other order was raised, limited. So there were two particular orders for this transaction. For Imperial Motors, the, the details are not attached.
Because you, you are bringing in Imperial Motors and you are saying Imperial Motors only supplied the...
The four-wheel drive.
Four-wheel drive. Do we have, which order did you use for Imperial Motors? Is it here for the four-wheel drive?
Well, for that particular order to be specific, Chair, that one, because it was not queried, it was on that, it was not attached in the appendices.
Now, can you, before I ask Honorable Munda, can you look at your local purchase order number 2883? The one to, I don't know how I can remember, which starts with Chauve, France, the 105,900. Who wrote this 13,000 on? This is what the DF was trying to explain. What is that 13,000 and what are you trying to communicate? Were you replacing the entire engine, spending 105,000 on this vehicle? What sort of spares were those? Which can cost equivalent to a new Toyota Corolla, just to repair a Nissan? CS, 105,000?
Thank you so much, Chair, for that question. We'll again call upon the Procurement Officer and Director of Finance to, to provide the responses. Thank you.
We may also need to see the bank transfer details or the statements showing us bank details that this money was wired to Drake's Auto spares. If you don't have the bank transfer details, you show us the cheque book, the cheque, the folders of the cheques that you made that time.
Thank you, Chair. Think on the bank statement, I can easily trace it on the internet banking and... Yes, even the proof of payment.
Yes, we need to see that. Because when you use the moral aspect to look at this transaction and what happened on this transaction, you would agree that this was the three. Just before you come in, DF and the Procurement Officer would like to see the invoice that you used to make the payment. Here you are just GRNs. Invoice you used to make 105,000 from Drake's Motors? Really, this transaction was genuine, what we can call third-party information from the other part of Drake's or that list of documents? Because you were paying Drake's. What was the basis of your payment? Even if it's a bank transaction, there must be some invoice. This is the invoice, then you pay against that, you pay that invoice. So CS, we can smell it's wrong on this transaction. Though even apart from Drake's, there is a revelation that the four-wheel drive was from Imperial. We would like to see from Imperial Motors, the supplier, the invoice, the payments to Imperial Motors and all those details, so that we can satisfy ourselves at... From the workshop, yes, that this is a list of items. Honorable Munda?
Chair, firstly, I'm getting worried because we have spent a lot of time on one question because the truth is not coming from your witness. So just like you have those documents you have indicated that they should provide, I asked about the job cut from the garage.
Yeah, that is critical.
That those spares, this is what they wanted. And then when the, when that job cut was issued, then cleared after the vehicle, do we have that document? Because that will show us that these spares went in at this time and the amount is there.
Correct.
So in the absence of that, Chair, you need to make a decision on this issue.
Dr. Manzal, the same one, last comment. Take notes, CS, and your team there. Yes, I, DF tried to explain how 217 was picked by the auditors. In his explanation is that at a time of audit, there was only one GRN, which is 33,650. Am I right? So from the local, from the purchase order of 105,900 minus 33,650, the, it comes to Then, with the GRN and the local purchase order, the entries and the values are different. There is an overpayment of 13,100.
That's the one I was asking.
Which, we need an answer just now. Further information? Just to be honest, we say, no, we made a mistake, we overpaid and we can, we can move forward. No, we can't move on. We need to establish what happened. If you look at this, CS, your, your response was that, your mic, your response was that actually all these things were... actually, all these things were taking place at the garage in Lusaka. The procurement officer told this committee. It was taking place in Lusaka. Now, the GRN of thirty-three thousand that you received, what is it that you received in Shangombo? You were receiving what? When all these things were happening at the garage in Lusaka? So, we know what you received under thirty-three thousand. Did you receive spares in Shangbo, then you entered in your stores, then sent them back again to Lusaka in the same garage? The submission was that all these things were happening in Lusaka at a garage. Hence, Honorable Munda would like to see the job card of those details. If you look at this, yes, hundred and five thousand, just spares to do with ball joints, shocks and everything, yeah, we may be thinking otherwise. We would like to know, but this is too high a cost for a vehicle, just which is being repaired. Apart from that, we suspect that there is some fraud taking place over this transaction. If you look, the items listed by Dr. Manza, what is on the GRN and what is on the, is it the invoice? No, not the invoice, the document, the items are different. Payment of thirteen thousand, which I asked- on this item, what is your comment with your DF and procurement?
Chair, thank you so much. Uh, I will still ask the Director of Finance to to respond to that, particularly the the last concern of the overpayment, as well as that thirty-three thousand that was paid, and whether the goods were received or not. Thank you, Chair.
Even the invoices, everything. DF?
Thank you, Chair. Drakes Auto Parts Local Purchase Order has a total of one zero five thousand nine hundred. And the vehicle was at the garage in Lusaka, where he was told to put the parts and also the labor component, which, as you check here, I think it's not indicated. But the total of this one zero five included the labor also, which was about thirteen.
Your mic, use.
One zero five nine hundred. Uh, you have twenty-one entries. So, where is the entry for labor? Normally, labor is a percentage of, of the works. Where is that item here?
We don't want to assume, where is the item of labor? Um, we adjourn for ten minutes. As we adjourn, go and reconsider yourselves, you come back and give responses on this one, then we move on. So I can see a lot of consultations taking place, procurement, treasurer, CS, and as a team. Utilize this ten minutes. Bring us the invoices, call your officers, send the copies, the picture of the vehicle, the front picture, so that we know everything within ten minutes.
Before they move out, maybe, Chair, who is who is Nancy Masulo and Vila Toma? On the- Who are they?
CS? Those two officers. Are they council employees? Treasurer?
Chair, let me be helped by the Director of Finance.
Director of Finance, for how long have you been at Shangombo Council?
Five years.
You should be the one to be active. You don't know the, 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 the two officers in question, are they officers at the council?
I was waiting for an opportunity to be-
But you saw the CS struggling. Should move in, tell us.
Wonderful.
Please, your department, one in charge of-
We have to verify.
Yes, adjourn. Let us adjourn for ten minutes, your immunity suspended.
Nariwanda Coast Range, it's a very nice coast range, road in a very bad state. Nariwanda Coast Range is made up of forests and rivers. Currently, we have got fifty-three schools, where mostly primary and basic, and six high school, schools. However, with the schools, I can tell you that we have got a lot of work to do. With the current recruitment of teachers, we embark on buildings, accommodation for teachers. Apart from schools, we have got a bad condition in terms of- I not even admit a pitch. So we have got a lot of work in terms of- I don't believe in building a health post. I believe in building a clinic which can accommodate at least maybe, at least fifteen people, which we don't have currently. Apart from there, we have got no roads in Nariwanda, which you can call a road. Um, uh, last year, actually, we had an accident, uh, where teachers were coming from a function in Mungu, the vehicle fall into a river. Meaning, our crossing points in Nariwanda are in a very bad state. So that one is also another area which we, we need to invest in. Apart from that, in Nariwanda, we recovered, cultivated a lot of rice, maize, cassa. Area is actually most productive part of Mung District. So we need to educate our people, so that they move the planes and come and invest a lot in Nariwanda Coast Range. In Nariwanda, we have got a very big plan for them. With the CDF which has been given to the coast ranges, we plan to start with the crossing points first. That's our first plan, we move to the next. If we can manage even to build many hospitals, that would be better. Actually, I have managed to secure a mini hospital for Nakanya, which is where we are trying to see if we can put a district. On a Saturday this coming weekend, I'll be in Nakanya, where I'm meeting all the chiefs in where we are going uh, issues. My my coast range know I, if I say I would bring development work at their community, I'll work with them, to see, and to see that we work with our WDCs. Because that's where development will start from. The chiefs, very gentlemen, what we should do, attack, attack first. From there, we shall see that Nariwanda is joined development. But in, actually, make sure that Nariwanda becomes a district, so that we share resources. Because currently, all the resources we- so that resources come to Nariwanda as a district, not as a sub.